Good morning, Martin Maderos checking in.
Good morning, councillor, we can hear you.
Well, thank you for coming to our continuing budget deliberations here at City Hall. We've now completed departmental presentations for transit, community service, public works, corporate services, planning and building, legislative service, and office of the CEO. We are now at the point of entertaining staff reports and motions from councillors. I would note, we have an attendance today councillor Basante, Brar, Santos, Keenan, deputy mayor Singh, councillor Tor, councillor Power, and online we have...
Mayor Brown, online we have councillor Fortini and councillor Maderos.
Okay, great. We will go to the first item which was requested by the deputy mayor to make it first on the agenda today because of the attendance of individuals here in the gallery today. And I will hand the floor to actually councillor Tor, who will present the motion that they were that they are here in regards to.
Thank you, Mayor Brown through you. There's members in the audience here from the Navas Long Term Care Centre and have emailed the clerk's office motion as well that I will be bringing at the appropriate time. And if we can move that item just up in the agenda because they've, we've accidentally told them to come here at 9:30, so they've all taken a day off work, the morning off work. So if I can move them up and we will deal with that at that time. Thank you.
Okay, so this will be the first item on the agenda and we're going to put the motion on the floor, on the screen as well. Do we have it as a clerk received it? I would note for those that haven't seen this, this is already in the budget. So, but this is just a formal recognition of what was already put in the budget. So, maybe while this is being put on the screen councillor Tor, you can speak to it.
Trying to go back on the board. Thank you. Definitely through you, Mayor Brown, this motion here is, there's already a line item in the budget that talks about this, but this is more so just allocating those funds. Navas Long Term Care Facility will be coming towards nine and 10. It is a long-term care facility with 160 beds for the community. This is akin to affordable housing for seniors in our city. So I think it is a very good step where if we can waive these development charges here, I believe they're also getting discounted at the region of Peel as well. And I think the city needs to play our important part here to make sure that something like this gets built and we can have these units come online.
Thank you councillor Tor. Over to deputy mayor.
Thank you, and I would like to actually thank staff for helping with this, for building it in the budget early on. So Nash, Mark, Alex, Michael, and Richard, thank you for everything and helping to stick handle this. The community is very thankful. And I want to acknowledge Steve and your team. You've helped significantly. It is a charity project and with the speed you responded and it was sort of complicated with the ministries of long-term care as well. And they have their own design standards as well as you know. And, but you helped a lot, your team, so thank you and send our regards to them too. This is years in the making and this is also about equity. We did this for Gave, we did it for Christian Holland Homes, and we committed to do it for also Navas. So, thank you to staff, thank you to council, thank you to my colleagues, and thank you to Gerononics Six Center, Brampton as well. Thank you.
Councillor Brar.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I really want to just say thank you again to all of the staff that have put in those hard work to make sure this is possible. And our Navas team, especially the Gother that has put in, you know, that effort to making sure that this long-term care comes to life. And I think when you look in the community, having a really culturally sensitive long-term care is important for the community and we've seen that. And I think everyone is very, very excited to see this project come to life. So, thank you again for all your hard work and looking forward to more projects coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brar. Note this motion is moved from councillor Tor, seconded by councillor Brar. And obviously, we're happy to put this in the budget. We know this is a beautiful project that the community has poured their heart, effort, donations into. And I know the deputy mayor in particular, he didn't want his name on the motion, he's letting the other movers move it, but I know that you've been passionate about this. I know you've been looking at supporting this fundraising wise over the last six months and thank you for your passion for this as well. So, I think you'll see this unanimously supported. So we have the motion on the floor, moved by councillor Tor, seconded by councillor Brar. All those in favor, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. And I believe the group requested a photo, so we'll do a photo with council and members of the Navas team. Did Kuen Dorchina leave already? Oh, so I also want to say a happy birthday to Kuen Dorchina officially. He insists on celebrating his birthday the same week as our deputy mayor. We're not sure who's older though. I would just note, we now have councillor Plessy online with us too. And councillor Plessy, I hope your son's hockey tournament went well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll be playing for the championship at 12 o'clock.
Okay, well, we'll make sure there is a lunch break then, and so that you can be as loud as possible. Okay, so, I believe there's a number of matters that want to be raised here today. Councillor Keenan, I know spoke to us, maybe you can explain it. Previously, this council has written the provincial government about the inability to have any revenue coming in from these, the large number of illegal and legal units that has challenged our bylaw capacity, transportation capacity, recreation capacity, healthcare capacity. It became a topic of the Ward Three and Four at Town Hall. So councillor Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and I know we've written letters to MPAC about the assessments and stuff, but we know that, you know, Brampton is special and unique in a way that we have a lot of ARUs and the provincial government has been pushing additional ARUs. And we just really need to take light into what, how that affects not just our services, but, you know, the community as a whole. And we just need some advocacy and hopefully we can write another letter to see if things could change there and we're able to do something with, you know, a little bit more of a fair balance because, you know, water waste, water, garbage, even our parks, our roads, our transit, everything is affected by this. So I think just another look and if, I would just like it for the mayor to write a letter to MPAC to see if those assessments could be done sooner.
So, the motion would be that council direct the mayor to write a letter to MPAC on making the city whole for ARUs and the costs associated with ARUs on city services. A seconded by councillor Santos. All those in favor, motion carries. And I know that was done on the spot, so councillor Keenan will make sure that the words are reflected accurately. Thank you for indulgence. Next on the screen. Oh, public delegations. Yeah, we can go straight to the public delegations. We have a public delegation from David Lang, Chair of Bike Brampton.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this morning. My name is David Lang. I'm a longtime Brampton resident. I'm chair of Bike Brampton, an organization that advocates for safe alternatives to car traffic on Brampton roads and in Peel as well. My purpose being here this morning is I want to thank councillor Power for bringing the motion forward last Thursday to build a recreation center and add a library to the Howden Street corridor. And I also agree with the comments that were made by councillors during Thursday's meeting about the importance of the libraries to the community and echo what councillor Santos said about the importance of providing active transportation connections to community amenities in addition to transit. And I wanted to note that all the pictures that are part of the presentation this morning are taken right at the place where that recreation center and library would be. And you can see the people that have been using these bike lanes since they've been built. Next slide please. The next few slides are excerpted from the library facilities master plan and they reinforce that it's more than just a few voices that are pushing for active transportation to be included as an integral part of city facility planning. Next slide please. Across the country, questions have been raised in the last few years about the relevancy of physical libraries considering the global trend to digital at the expense of bricks and mortar. Brampton libraries have done a great job bucking that trend and are more relevant and more popular today than they were a decade ago. They did this by staying ahead of the shifts in society, understanding the importance of facility placement to address the needs of their patrons, even as the community emerged from the effects of a global pandemic and the recognition that most people still want access to physical libraries, but in, as part of walkable, bikeable communities. Next slide please. So in preparation for the facilities master plan, library staff considered community engagement. They had focus groups with participation from 15 stakeholder groups as well as members of the public. And one of the six themes that emerged from those discussions was the importance for libraries to be both transit and bicycle friendly. And I didn't participate in those workshops, so it wasn't me that was slanting the results. Next slide please. The library board also engaged in a visioning session. A similar theme emerged from that session recognizing the importance of connecting library branches to both public transit and active transportation infrastructure because many library patrons don't drive. In many cases, this is due to issues of transportation affordability and accessibility, but there are also a growing number of Brampton residents who choose active transportation to get to local amenities by bike or by micro mobility options such as scooters. And they do this not just for the cost-saving benefits, but also for reasons of health, community, and/or environmental concerns. Unfortunately, some councillors are angling for the 2025 budget dollars to remove bike lanes along this, along these corridors. And I'm sure that they are doing this for, in what they think is in the best interest of the majority of their constituents. I implore them to rethink that objective and rather think Vision Zero and Vision 2040. Achieving these visions takes more than just writing words on paper and calling it a plan. Moving towards a future vision takes leadership and political courage that uses communication, education, collaboration, and negotiation in the face of short-term opposition to change, rather than mere acquiescence. Cyclists may be in the minority, but they provide outsized benefits to their community that should be encouraged and supported. Even if one discounts the health, safety, social, and environmental benefits, everyone should care about the impending traffic congestion this city will face if concerted efforts aren't taken to encourage more people to leave their cars at home. Especially for short-distance trips. The negative economic consequences of that will be substantial and the impact on road safety will be catastrophic for many people. The Howden bike lanes represent a key component of active transportation infrastructure in the city today and will become even more important once the library recreation facility is complete. So today, let me congratulate council and staff for planning the city as an integrated system that will offer people healthy, affordable, and environmentally sustainable transportation choices. Let me implore council to continue making progress towards our collective vision of a safer, healthier, more accessible, and more environmentally sustainable Brampton by continuing to build on that AT network. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a question for you from councillor Santos.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for coming in. In follow-up to the motion passed at special council budget meeting last week, I believe there might be a motion coming up later regarding putting the bike lanes into a boulevard instead. And just want your opinion while you're here in terms of what that would mean for a library, school, et cetera, to put it on a boulevard versus on the road, what your concerns might be.
Well, I guess the major concern is, is that there are lots of opportunities for places in the city that don't have access to active transportation facilities at all today. And whereas the Howden Street bike lanes have been there for a couple of years and they are getting increasing usage, we know that. And they are, I think, and I mean, I would defer to staff on this, but I think that they are doing some of their other ancillary intended purpose, which is to act as a traffic calming measure along that corridor, to place traffic into single file, to ensure that people have an easier access to get across the road. You saw in that one photograph that there are people that are accessing the community center from the north side of Howden at that place. And so I would say that if we were given, we have limited budget dollars, that we should be spending those budget dollars in building active transportation infrastructure in other parts of the city, as opposed to spending money in removing existing infrastructure and/or designing corridors, additional corridors on places where we already have that infrastructure in place.
Thank you, David. And then you just mentioned something about single file traffic. So, this particular corridor has a school, there's going to be a library, recreation center. If it's not already a community safety zone, I'm sure it already, it will be.
Yes.
And folks are going to want speed cameras, et cetera, if they're not there already to slow the cars down. There's likely crossing guards along this corridor as well. And I recall in a planning meeting where Kevin Miniker provided staff, or provided the committee with an update on the active transportation master plan, he explicitly said that single file traffic within community safety zones such as this one is far safer than additional lanes of traffic. What would you have to say about that?
I would agree entirely. Part of the, part of the problem that cyclists face is when cars are doing something erratic and by shifting lanes in an unspecified manner or not in a way that is reliable, that people understand. And, and that puts cyclists at risk because drivers still are getting used to the idea of having cyclists in the city. There aren't, you know, we're still in the minority. And so it's when those erratic behavior takes place where, you know, most of the collisions occur and then the cyclist ends up as either seriously injured or killed because they're the vulnerable road user.
Thank you, David, and through you, Mr. Mayor. In addition to that, we just passed a motion last week regarding safer drivers equals safer roads. And within the whereas clauses, I found research that shared that 2024 was the deadliest year for cyclists and pedestrians when it came to vehicle collisions. The reason why I emphasize pedestrians is because with a school already there, it being identified as a community safety zone, a library and a recreation center, if you add an additional two lanes of traffic by taking away bike lanes, it becomes more deadly for pedestrians, especially those kids crossing the road and the crossing guards now having to manage four lanes of traffic instead of two. So, how would you, I know you do a lot of work with schools and many schools across the city. the city. What would your response be to that fact?
Well, I take us back to 2012, when the Ontario coroner was asked to produce a report based upon a significant number, I believe it was 129 cycling deaths that occurred between 2006 and 2010. And the recommendations that came out of that was to build a cycling network, which would help to make all the roads safer for all users. There's plenty of studies that are available that show that when you put bicycle infrastructure on a roadway, it does in fact make the road safer and more accessible for everyone. So I would hate to see us heading back towards, I mean, we already are experiencing more cyclists and particularly pedestrian deaths in larger, major cities in Ontario because of increased traffic, because of increased speeds. And it would be a shame for us to remove some of the things that are working to help to make roads safer in this city and to take us backwards towards where we were back in 2012. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Question to staff. Has there been an increased usage of this corridor? I know that there was a report that indicated it as such, but perhaps a reminder about the increase of usage of micro mobility. So that's the eScooter Pilot Program encouraged by the Province of Ontario, which has been extended by five years, and also increased in the use of cyclists along this network.
Through the chair, through to you, Counselor Santos. Council will recall the most recent report that staff brought forward on active transportation was in response to Bill 212, the provincial legislation to remove bike lanes from municipal streets. In that report, staff alluded to the fact that overall at the citywide level, active transportation is increasing, and the report also had stats on the success of the eScooter program. I believe it was appendix one or two of that report also broke down KPIs for various pilot areas of active transportation, whether it be Howden and Wadon and a couple other streets. And again, that report spoke to those KPIs moving in the right direction in terms of reduced number of vehicles, travel speed decreasing, and whatnot.
Thank you.
We also have Rex Bogart online if council wishes any more details.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. And also through the budget telephone town hall that we had last Monday, or this Monday? No, it's today. Last week. I believe there was a question regarding this, and Commissioner Ganesh, you had shared the statistics or facts around congestion along this corridor, and in fact, it's reduced.
Through the chair, through to you, Counselor Santos. That's correct. The mayor's budget tele town hall, this was raised, and it was through the mayor that I reminded again. The public document of the staff report that was brought forward on Bill 212 basically highlighted travel time for Howden Boulevard. So before the bike lanes were put in, the average travel time for this segment was three minutes after. It's a reduction of 2.7 minutes, so roughly 10%. Volumes have decreased approximately 39%, and overall cut-through traffic has decreased 35%. So based on the KPIs that were brought forward to council to measure, it would appear that the bike lanes are doing what they're supposed to do on this section of Howden Boulevard.
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Ganesh. So I would be happy to entertain bringing information regarding this matter forward now. However, I would remind colleagues that the province asked for statistics, the province asked for facts, and the fact remains that, number one, this particular piece of the network is still a pilot. And even within the pilot itself, the statistics are showing increased usage of micro mobility, eScooter, and cyclists. It is upholding Vision Zero principles, where 2024 was the most deadliest year for pedestrians and cyclists. This particular corridor network is within a community safety zone where single-file traffic is the safest way to deal and protect vulnerable users such as students, families, pedestrians, cyclists, who are going to use the library, recreation center, and the school that is existing. And that the statistics and facts also show that when it comes to congestion, it's actually reduced the impact of congestion along this corridor. So that's all I have to say for now. Let's see what motion comes forward in terms of, you know, making it more dangerous for folks in this corridor versus safer. No further questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Counselor Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm going to request that we bring forward Counselor Power's motion at this time. I think the conversation has now gone to where the motion has kind of been led, and I think it would be appropriate that we just have that conversation instead of doing it twice. So hopefully, we get that. And to that point, you know, there's no bigger advocate on council than Counselor Santos when it comes to active transportation, and we applaud her for all of the work that she does. I think every member on council understands the need that we have for it. And when the province came out with that they were just going to come and take them away after, you know, years of trying to build a network and how we can interconnect it, I think what Counselor Power is about to do is come up with, not take them away, but another idea on how we can keep them implemented in that place. And for me, I look at it for safer for the pedestrian. And I wonder if a lot of pedestrians are being killed in 2024 because we haven't yet figured out how to keep the cyclists safe on the road that people aren't used to having them on. I know as a father of four little kids, I would not let my children ride on the road. I don't think it's safe enough for them. That's just me personal, it's my personal opinion. I have a hard time letting them ride on the sidewalk, too, if the road is a busy road. And hopefully, as the years go on and we get, you know, better and new tools come out, that that would be a case where I would be a lot more comfortable and hopefully one day have grandchildren that I'll be able to do these rides with. I am, and I do believe in active transportation and in our roots. I think we need to do more, you know, we also need to know what the province is going to be doing with them because I think in this case, if we do a design on the stretch that Counselor Power may be discussing, it'll give us an idea of how we can, you know, where there are sore points in the municipality when it comes to drivers and our increase in traffic, where we can still keep our active transportation and our lines going. So, you know, I'm definitely not in favor of removing active transportation, but I am in favor on how we can adapt into a boulevard setting and be really connected in the routes that we choose. I will support Counselor Power's motion when he brings it forward because I do feel that with the library and the rec center, we will see an increase of population coming here with traffic as well, with the cars. And I know we've heard of stats that the bike lanes or the active transportation lanes are doing what they're supposed to do by slowing down traffic. For me, that's not what they're intended for. They're intended to get active transportation where they need to go safely, and slowing down traffic for me is not, that's not a case. Yes, it is a benefit, but it's not a case to put an active transportation line because we're trying to slow down traffic because we still don't have the drivers that understand that, and I'm sure that's why we're seeing a lot of pedestrians being killed. I know in mine and Counselor Maderos' area, Charle is probably our sore point for residents when it comes to driving, the vehicles. And I drive the road almost every day, and I see vehicles flying through that bike lane, just flying through it with no regard. I've had residents call and tell me that they pull in front of vehicles while they do it, saying, why am I sitting in traffic? So I feel that there's still a lot of education for the drivers when it comes to these. They still confuse me. I will be absolutely honest as to, you know, when you can turn right from the one you can't, the paint, what's not paint, what you can park in, what you can't park in. So education definitely still needs to be done with these. But I think what Counselor Power is trying to do here is understand the need for the active transportation in that corridor and make sure we can keep it because if the province comes in and gets rid of it on that corridor, we're behind the eight ball. And then we need to look at implementing other road safety measures that are meant to slow cars down. Bike lanes shouldn't be meant to slow cars down. The other measures we put in should be slowing down the cars. So I will support this in the design phase for Counselor Power here because I think it's important to see if we can get it to work in other areas which would enhance our active transportation routes. And I think that's what's important, being able, not necessarily being on the road, but being able to get to and from where we need to be. So hopefully, I explained that to the best of my ability, but...
So it sounds like Counselor Power, you want to put your motion on the floor? Or are there any additional questions for David before we can? Okay, so David, thank you for your delegation. Motion to receive. David's delegation moved by Counselor Santos, second by Counselor Keenan. All those in favor, motion carries. Counselor Power is going to put the motion up on the screen and speak to it. And before he does, I just want to sort of set the conversation. I think we're all a lot closer than we are. Sometimes this is a divisive topic, and it doesn't need to be. I look at the debates they have in Toronto and their fears. I would note the province didn't put any routes from Brampton on their list of ones to be removed. So that announcement, that legislation is not, has no effect on Brampton at this point. I would say, I look at other cities, Victoria, Vancouver, Montreal, and they're ahead of Brampton on active transportation. It's painful sometimes to get there, but eventually we'll get there and we'll have a network that works, that's connected, and that is widely used. You go to Holland, and boy, incredible. Obviously, challenges with Canada, winter's being a little bit fiercer, but I believe we can have a vibrant, well-used active transportation network. We just have to have the patience and get through these challenges. About a year ago, we had a number of councilors that wanted to put motions forward to remove bike lanes. And at the time, I challenged you, and I said, I don't want to see gaps in our active transportation network. If there's a gap, then it's just going to be disincentive to use active transportation. We need to keep the integrity of the map together, east, west, north, south. And when it came to budget, I told councilors, I'd be willing to put more money into the budget if it meant keeping the network together. And I asked, please, don't put forward motions to remove segments, come up with an alternative. And I know Counselor Power, you accepted my advice, you didn't put forward the motion to remove a segment. I know Counselor Keenan, you took the advice and didn't put forward a motion, Counselor Maderos, to remove Charle Way, and I appreciate that everyone's come to this in a collaborative spirit. And so like I said to you a year ago, we're willing to put more money in the budget to keep this together, to keep the active transportation network intact, and that's the spirit. It's not about taking apart, taking bike lanes out, it's about making sure that we deal with these pain points and we keep the map and the network connected. And I think a lot of cities are having different conversations. They're about removing bike lanes, not adding more money into active transportation. The starting point for this conversation is this is about adding funds to active transportation. And so this has been a little bit painful, but at the end of the day, eventually, we're going to have a great network that I think will be greatly appreciated by future generations. Counselor Power.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I echo the sentiments. It's a very divisive topic when it comes to bike lanes, and it's not about removing bike lanes, or it's not about the active transportation piece. It's actually encouraging so it does become a complete network, encouraging so that way it makes it safer for all riders. But, you know, and I applaud you, Mr. Mayor, because for the last three years, in every budget, there's been a massive component to recreation. And I think, you know, by doing something like this, this actually does the exact same thing. It actually builds on recreation. If you look at the corridor of Howden, Bramley's already had a north-south bike network. You can go from north of Beaufort all the way down almost to the 407 and not even hit a street, right? There's pathways that go underneath bridges of all the roads. The current iteration of bike lanes, especially the curbed ones, don't work. And the reason why they don't work is because we're spending massive amounts of money, we're buying new machines to plow, we're putting up bullards on top of the concrete barriers. Those bullards are being knocked down, and the worst part about it is they're not being knocked down by bad drivers. They cost 45 bucks apiece. They're being knocked down by the region appeal garbage trucks because they can't get to the curb to get the garbage into the bins. So it's just a constant cycle of spending money. And I think by looking at a design or looking at ways of putting active transportation and doing these lanes, I'm not saying get rid of bike lanes. I'm not saying that active transportation is not what's needed in the city. I welcome it, but just imagine if it's connected east, west, north, and south. Right now, it's not connected, and by building on the boulevards, we have an opportunity to make it connected easier and making it better for all. And as Counselor Keenan mentioned, I would never let my kids ride on the bike lanes that are curbed on the street. It's just not safe. I'd rather them off the road. So with that, I'll get right to the motion, and I hope everybody will support it. So the motion is that the 2025 capital budget be amended to include a new project in the amount of $170,000 to design the relocation of active transportation bike lanes from the road to the boulevard on Howden Boulevard from North Park Drive and Central Park Drive, with the funding source to be determined by the treasurer. The design, be it that of may, that the design be completed in time for construction funded to be requested in the 2026 budget submission, subject to the mayor's consideration. So that's the motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Santos.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I think some of the things that Counselor Power has shared in terms of the network not being connected is actually false. This Howden corridor is actually one of the most important corridors from east-west, connecting to Don Don Trail, connecting to Etobicoke Creek Trail, north-south corridors and trails. And so it's a very important piece. I think one important piece which is missing, which is a priority for the city when it comes to Vision Zero, when it comes to protecting vulnerable users of the road, when it comes to the high number of pedestrian cyclist deaths, one piece is missing is actually the safety component. So I'd like to make an amendment after item number one, that staff in the report back also indicate any implications related to safety of vulnerable users should additional roads be added in the community safety zone in this area here. So if there are more lanes of traffic added when the bike lanes are moved to the boulevard, what does that do in terms of Vision Zero commitments, in terms of protecting vulnerable users? Because as traffic staff had pointed out, single-file traffic in community safety zones is the safest in terms of preventing accidents and death. And as Commissioner Ganesh pointed out, the corridor as it is right now with the bike lanes in this corridor has actually seen a reduction of commute time in this corridor, a reduction in commute time, a reduction in cut-through traffic. So I want to add a safety component to this, that staff report back in its design, any safety implications with respect to Vision Zero, and that the mayor also put this under consideration as well.
So to incorporate Vision Zero into the design component, that would be an item four, that Vision Zero be incorporated into the design. If it's a friendly, we can vote on it altogether; otherwise, we can vote on it separately. Okay, so Counselor Power's views that as a friendly. Counselor Keenan has requested to second the motion. We have on the board Counselor Fertini, followed by Counselor Plessy, followed by Counselor Maderos, virtually. So Counselor Fertini, first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'll support this. I remember last time I was saying when we were doing on North Park, we should put it on the boulevard. My worry is, if we go on Howden, put it on the boulevard, which is a great idea, is there's no grass for the... boulevard to play on. And so North Park, there is, even though we planted tons of trees, we'll have to remove those trees to get the space. But then if you go down to Howden, there's no space on the boulevard. I know the staff was talking to me also about putting some on Central Parkway. There's areas where there is space, and there's no more than less than a foot and a half to two feet of grass. So but I will wait for the report to come back. I will support it. I've always said we should put them on the grass and not stop the cars. And but I have to agree with councillor Santos on that. I've been driving by Howden, and I've been noticing a lot of traffic. There's not, it has been, it's a lot compared to where I was before. So we got to look at the safety issues. So I'll support it and wait for the reports and the design to come back. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Plessy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, through you, to councillor Power, I'd like to make an amendment as well. I'd like to have staff look at the increase of service, the cost of that, once it is moved to the boulevard, to ensure that this bike, the bike lane will be treated just like any other road in terms of any snow clearing, cleaning, salting that needs to be done, to make sure that we we do treat these bike lanes like a priority, like we do the rope as well. Staff would like to comment on that.
I think through the chair, the councillor Maderos says, or excuse me, councillor Plessy, will certainly take a look at what that would mean from a from a winter maintenance perspective in terms of cost and include that in the report in terms of any any additional costs to to maintain that that bike lane on the boulevard during the winter months.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, next up on the list, we have councillor Maderos, and then followed by councillor Maderos, Deputy Mayor Singh.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my question is with staff, because so when I see, we're looking at 170 to do a redesign. And I just wanted to know from staff, if we do a redesign there, chances are, if that's going to be the new approach, that might go to the other area. So what we not costing out, you have a design that's 170, but the actual implementation and construction, then there's going to be another amount that would have to be considered, as you mentioned, in 2026. So my concern is the money that we're going to spend on this initiative, that's money we could have poured in sort of completing the active transportation network. And then my concern is that if we're going to be looking at a boulevard approach, then we have to, I assume, be consistent across. I guess, you know, I don't understand the technical sort of ramifications by doing, for example, having one way in one area and then moving to a boulevard to this specific area. The cost also to remove trees and move trees. So staff can just give me some, you know, some feedback in terms of if this approach, you know, how does this sort of integrate with building a network? And is this something that we would consider throughout the city? Or is it just specific? Are there features? Are there issues specific with this area that merits this type of approach?
Commissioner Ganesh.
Through through the mayor, through to you councillor Maderos. I'm just going to refer back to the report that was brought forward to council on Bill 212, where in that report, staff did a high-level costing, and I'll quote, it says that to implement a cycling facility in the boulevard is approximately eight times more than the cost to paint a typical bike lane. So, you know, 65,000 per kilometer versus potentially up to 500,000 per kilometer, because that includes design, land acquisition, utility relocation. Perhaps to to satisfy councillor Maderos' point, and it's a good one, that part of the report back not only focus on Howden Boulevard, but take the cost and extrapolate it to what it could be potentially from a citywide implementation for council's consideration. That would be my recommendation.
Yeah, that's great. And I guess I was confused if there's an actual report back or not. But since you mentioned there was a report back, if possible, Mayor, if that can be taken under consideration, a possible sort of consideration, what that would look across the city.
Absolutely, councillor Maderos. And I would note that hopefully these pain points are few and far between, because I realize this does set a precedent. We're trying to maintain the integrity of this network. But I realize there are a few areas in the city that are pain points, but as much as possible, I want to say the patience to get through it. But if there is an area that warrants a design look like we're doing here, then, you know, this this does set a precedent. So thank you for making that point, councillor Maderos. Deputy Mayor Singh.
Thank you. And I'd just like to add two minor amendments. For number two, the staff include any implications related to safety of vulnerable users and traffic patterns. I'd like to just look at different traffic patterns that emerge with both solutions. I think that's fair. I've heard that referenced whether it was faster or not. So that that would be helpful. And one last thing, because this might set a precedent, if you're open to it, some public consultation, then open houses for this as well, I think would be very helpful. And there's a good chance, my mother will be there supporting the bike lanes. But so she's a fan. But at the end of the day, you're the councillor. So I would just ask for a public consultation before it comes back to council.
Okay, is that public consultation being added in? So you could actually show the public what the redesign looks like?
Exactly.
Okay. I'm sure we could find a rock center in the area to have that meeting. Ward councillors can host. We're just waiting for it to show on the screen so you can see, make sure the wording's accurate. I think we got a motion that is balanced and incorporates all the opinions. So on that note, through this balanced motion, councillor Santos and Power with the last comments.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So I wanted to build off what councillor Maderos' headpoint was was talking about earlier and some of his concerns with with how we're doing this. And and I'll point out that number three and number two, but number three in particular, that Vision Zero be incorporated into the design. We may find that in some cases, and to councillor Fortini's point as well, there are, there's no room on the boulevard. And in some cases, it has to be on the road. And in that case, making sure that we have the principle of Vision Zero and safety as our top priority, number one, in order to have safer roads that protect all users of the road. The only other thing that I wanted to add was that I believe Commissioner Ganesh, we have a mobility, updated mobility network report that's coming to council sometime soon.
Through the mayor, through to you councillor Santos. That's right. Council may recall that staff were directed to update our entire transportation master plan, so the Brampton Mobility Plan. We've done a few of those council drop-in sessions and sort of public outreach sessions. So by the end of this quarter, we're planning on bringing an update back to council. Part of that, part of that update could incorporate elements that were discussed today as a precursor to staff reporting back on this direction.
Thank you, Commissioner Ganesh. And that's what I was hoping for. I think we have some of those stats and figures and numbers already, even including updated numbers related to cyclists and scooters that are using the existing protected bike lanes as they are now. So if we could include all of that information, or as much as we can, in that mobility network updated report, that would be fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Power.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to add on number two there for when we're going to talk about safety and vulnerable users and traffic patterns. Can we make it sure that it's Brampton-specific? I'm not interested in what happens in Toronto, just Brampton. And because I've never seen any stats for Brampton-specific in regards to fatalities or collisions or anything like that.
Okay, thank you councillor Power. I think that's a relevant point. And thank you councillor Plessy for the good points that you made as well. Okay, so we have the motion on the floor. All those in favor, motion carries unanimously. Look at that. Motion on active transportation adopted unanimously. I told you, there's more in common than we realize. Okay, councillor Santos has a motion that she's prepared today, recognizing the new population figures that really speak to an underrepresented population in the city of Brampton that affects our funding with the multitude of funding arranged, funding pathways we have with the provincial and federal government. Councillor Santos, do you like to bring up your motion now?
Sure.
I believe this is being moved by councillor Santos and seconded by councillor Tor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So I believe it was January the 16th where Mike Moffett posted on social media the new Statistics Canada numbers when it comes to population. And we always knew, we always knew here around this table in Brampton, that our population was far higher than what the Census Canada 2021 numbers were sharing. And certainly with the new numbers, Brampton has become officially surpassing Mississauga in population and officially the second-largest population in the GTA. So we are now, so now it's Toronto, followed by the city of Brampton. And from 2023, we went from 745,000 people, according to StatsCan, to 2024, 791,000 people. We are 10,000 people higher than more populous than Mississauga. And Mayor Brown, since 2018, and some of my other colleagues elected since 2018, and certainly the ones elected in 2022, together with our GR department and our senior leadership team, have been advocating extensively at various conferences, making trips to Ottawa, to Queen's Park, talking about the fact that Brampton is has has more issues and more population than many of our neighboring municipalities, and that we are not getting our fair share of per capita funding on major projects like healthcare, education, social services, transit. We know that we are over capacity, or we don't have enough buses to serve the amount of transit using users using our transit system. And so with the new population numbers out there, we're calling on staff to please report back in detail what the gaps are. So what what service, what the population, based on per capita funding, how much Brampton is short-changed on things like transit, on things like infrastructure projects, on things like healthcare, et cetera, that other orders of government through a funding allocation formula are giving other municipalities. But for so long, Brampton has been chronically underfunded. And this is a chart here. So Brampton, as you can see, is now 791 with a percentage growth of 6.2%. We know that we're higher than Hamilton, higher than Vaughan, and now we know we're higher than Mississauga. And in fact, across the country, we have a higher population than Vancouver. And so I think it's time now that there's going to be probably a federal election as well as a provincial election, to say to the existing governments, as well as those who want to be government, that it's time to catch up. It's time to catch up Brampton on our fair share of funding. But in order to start that campaign and revitalize that fair share funding campaign, we must make sure we have all the data. So a question to staff, would you, do we have enough information with these new population numbers to find out how short-changed we are in some of these major areas?
Yes, Commissioner Ganesh.
Through you, Mayor Brown, through to councillor Santos. This discussion is timely as myself and the Commissioner for Legislative Services have been having the same conversation. And, you know, what we would start to do is work with our folks in finance to look at some of the background material used to populate, no pun intended, our DC background study. You'll recall that that DC background study is funded on a persons-per-unit that is used to cost out infrastructure and services that we collect development charges for. That coupled with some of the previous data that Dr. Moffett presented in December of 2023, would be able to give us, I guess, a starting point to have a conversation around what the delta is between the true funding to be realized, based on the additional burden that this new population count is putting on. So Planning Department will work with Legislative Services and Finance and Government Relations on a report back.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Ganesh. And this brings us to the other point in terms of the cost pressures that municipalities face because the largest source of revenue or one of the only sources of revenue we have to pay for such exponential growth like this is property taxes. And so there's going to be more and more pressure on property taxes, especially for Brampton, given our population and lack of contributions from other orders of government. The only final note in this motion, and councillor Tor, thank you for seconding it, is for a long time, we've been underrepresented at the region of appeal in terms of votes at the table at the region of appeal. Currently, Mississauga has more votes at the table than Brampton. Most recently, the provincial government tried to rebalance that that voting power at region of appeal by allocating seats from Calladon to Brampton. But now that Brampton has a higher population than Mississauga, I think it's appropriate for the mayor to and city of Brampton to advocate to the province to actually balance that those votes and that representation at the region even further. So the second piece of the motion is about fair representation at the regional table. Thank you, Mayor Brown.
Okay, I thank you councillor Santos. Councillor Tor.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Brown. I'll keep it short. Councillor Santos covered pretty much everything. Thank you for bringing this up as well. I know our economic development team was the one that just pointed it out that, you know, look at the numbers, this this new StatsCan numbers that are coming out, we're still getting funded based on a 650,000 population. These are still official numbers that say we're 791,000. We know in our city, we still have more people than that are actually captured here in the census. So I'd like to support this, especially when this comes to fair representation at the region of appeal. And in the first part of that motion, with the objective to revitalize a fair share campaign, I think it is very important to do so. And right now would be the best time to do it with a provincial election looming, with a federal election possibly happening as well. I think this is the best time that the city of Brampton needs to advocate for our residents to be funded appropriately. We no longer can be a city that has 1.5 hospital, a shortage in every infrastructure funding possible. I think we need to see commitments from future candidates or, you know, the current governments as well, that they will be providing the fair share of funding to our residents. I think that will also eventually help us with our property taxes that we're hearing about. So I'm happy to second this motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Pretty basic principle, representation by population. And to make sure that funding by population as well, per capita funding has always been the premise. And so those Stats Canada numbers that came out, wow, it really shows how we're being short-changed. And we have an advocacy campaign that needs to happen to be reflective of of what the numbers we're seeing today. Motion on the floor, all those in favor, the motion put forward by councillor Santos and Tor. Okay, motion carries. We have the proposed 2025 Stormwater Charge Increase staff report. I think the staff report speaks for itself. It speaks to the fact that we have projects across the city where this charge is necessary. If there's any questions about the staff report, feel free to ask now. Otherwise, we can have a motion to receive the staff report. Seeing no questions, motion moved by councillor Visante, seconded by councillor Brer to receive the staff report. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to the next staff report, 7.2, Council Office of Community Outreach Support. Are there any questions about this staff report? Seeing none, we have a motion moved by councillor Santos, seconded by councillor Keenan. to receive the staff report on council office community outreach support. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to 9.1, questions from council. Are there any additional questions from council? Yeah, sorry councillor Tor.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I just have three questions here that arise from the budget town hall meeting that we had over the weekend. And we had our city staff present here, present there as well. I promised the residents that I would be asking these questions here as well so that we can get it on record and we can have these answers for all the residents of wards nine and 10. Very short questions, expect very short answers as well. One, the first one is regarding what the biggest complaint we hear is the 311 and bylaw response times, especially when it comes to street parking and sidewalks being blocked. It is, it is a nuisance for people with children and strollers and for people that have accessibility needs when they use the sidewalks. I often get complaints about all the street parking issues that we have. So do we have something in this budget that would address those challenges? The second one being recreation booking books up pretty fast and there was a specific ask for swimming. Is there anything in the budget that would provide more swimming, swimming times or new amenities? And the third one being that the second hospital is still a top priority for the residents. What do we see in this budget that helps us get closer to that goal? Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm going to defer some of those questions to the Community Services Commissioner on swimming. I, I was there for the town hall and frustration expressed as difficult to get swimming times. I believe we've in recent times increased the wages for swim instructors to try to get more swim instructors, but maybe you could speak to that and the new swimming amenities that are coming in, in the city. In terms of that will be for community services. In terms of the second hospital, the levy is, is in this budget and we're being told the construction will begin in late March or early April. Excited about that. So stay tuned for that groundbreaking. Over to Commissioner Boyce.
Through the mayor, thank you to councillor Tor. So we will be having February 17th, I believe, on Family Day, the opening of Ball Moro, which is a pool back in our inventory. So there's going to be more programming there. We're also could be commencing very soon the construction of Embelton Rec Center, which will have a large pool in it. We are increasing our rec programming overall with 5%. So we're certainly look at swimming additions where we can, as we know they're in, in high demand. And as the mayor mentioned too, we are working with HR over the last, past few years to be able to attract and retain swimming instructors, lifeguards, to make sure that we can deliver as many programs as we possibly can. So we will keep that as a priority.
Okay, thank you councillor Tor, any additional questions? Okay. That takes us to Budget 2025 Public Engagement Report. Is there, is there a report council has on this? I assume that's the feedback from the town halls? Okay. So I think those polling questions were shared with council. I don't see Jason here, but Alex, did you want to speak to that? The public, 2025 Public Engagement Report.
Okay. That's coming through for this year and that'll come out through columns and when we, when we put that out, is that what you're looking for?
Item 9.2 on the agenda is Budget 2025 Public Engagement Report. I assume that just means the polling questions, feedback from the town halls. We did a number of survey questions. The moderator was councillor Visante, but I believe we asked three questions during the, during the town hall. And we also had, I believe, a survey question on the ECTV, the business, so.
We have a report, Q and can share on screen for you.
Okay, the report's here.
Just to receive.
Okay, just to receive and that's a summary of those two.
Yes, the summary of the town halls, yeah.
Are there any questions about this? Seeing none. Motion to receive moved by councillor Visante, seconded by councillor Tor. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to 9.3, 2025 Transit Budget Presentation Follow-Up Questions. Are there, are there, and I think we should put the follow-up questions on the screen. And if there's any additional questions from the answers, now would be a great time. And I know our transit manager Heidi is here to answer any additional questions. Councillor Visante.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just a question through you to staff with regards to continuing our work to implement Zoom across the city. Just wanted to know for us here and for members of the public, what can we expect in following years in terms of Zoom implementation?
Thank you councillor, through the chair. We're continuing to work with the city's transportation planning folks on the development of the mobility plan. So in that plan, we've identified a number of corridors that will be, that will be, have Zoom service adopted into them. And we're also working with them to look at the appropriate timelines as to when those services would be, would be launched. So we are anticipating a further growth of that. And again, just leaning on the mobility plan to help answer some of those questions.
Thank you, and through you, Mayor. Could we, might we be able to expect a report on that from you in the near future so that we understand by 2026 budget, what we may need to move ahead on?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. I think that's something that we can work either through the mobility plan update or a separate report from transit. We'll make sure that that information is provided back to council.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion moved by councillor Visante, seconded by councillor Power to receive the Transit Budget Presentation Follow-Up Questions. All those in favor, motion carries. I'm also just been told by the clerk that we didn't have a motion to receive the Legislative Services and Office of the CEO report that is required. Motion to receive those two reports moved by councillor Keenan, seconded by councillor Santos.
Mr. Mayor, I'm declaring a conflict on this.
Okay, the clerk will so note. So please don't, and the conflict is on which one? Legislative Services, okay. So we'll take, we'll take those votes separately so you can just mute yourself. Receiving the Legislative Services Report, all those in favor, motion carried. That was moved by councillor Santos and Keenan. Now councillor Fortini can come back on, receive the report from the Office of the CEO, moved by councillor Keenan, seconded by councillor Santos, all those in favor, motion carries unanimously. This takes us to public question period, are there public questions? Please come down.
Hello, my name is Sylvia Roberts. And so I noticed you've been discussing moving more of the bike lanes on Boulevard. And I want to just ask council, are you aware that the DC bylaw assumes that the cost to install on Boulevard bike lanes is $14 million a kilometer? Which seems a bit of much money for bike lanes on Boulevard compared to what it costs to put them on the road.
Okay, I'll refer to that question to our planning commissioner. Through you, Mayor Brown. About the DC bylaw? Certainly. I am not familiar with that particular cost from our DC bylaw. I'm looking to the chief budget officer, the CFO, if they are as well, but certainly something we could take back. Okay, Nash or DeMar about the.
Yeah, through the chair, I'm not aware of that, that level of cost. That seems a little drastic, 14 million per kilometer.
That's from 2024 by law study. So what we'll do is, valid question, and we'll make sure that written response is sent to you. So maybe, how long should that take, Steve and Nash?
By the end of the day.
By the end of the day. How's that for a fast response? Okay. Okay, so we have our technical motions I'm going to put on the screen. So this will just take a moment. And I can speak to these, what's on the screen. Okay, do you have them on the screen? Okay, okay. Every year we do technical recommendations at the end. And items one, two, three are the standard motions we put forward. Item four was the shift of the capital budget for the Howden Recreation Centre into next year's budget year, based on the motion that was prepared by councillor Power on this new, larger, more beautiful recreation facility with a library now. Number five is just a note that we've set up that we need justification for capital projects or activities that have been open for three years with no activity. That was something that we passed last year. It's consistent with that, just to make sure that if there's been no activity on a file, the council is going to get a report on that that would justify it being continued if there's no activity at all. Number six is about the expansion of the RL. If it goes into new wards, it would be free and part of this promotion campaign, just like we did before, where it was free for those that signed up, was that we've expanded the campaign by also offering a free smoke detector. So that was part of the, the, the fire fund is we have these smoke detectors that will be given to those that register their illegal unit. Number seven was just something we missed about youth sports. It's a 95,000 for youth sports that we wanted to have in the, in the budget. And then number eight was about the Williams Parkway reconstruction. The wording for that reconstruction was missing from the original budget in terms of the reserve account for, for asset repair replacement. So those are the technical motions. I'm happy to move that, seconded by councillor Visante. All those in favor, motion carries. Now, council has a 30-day period. Now, we've concluded our motions, but you have a 30-day period in which you can do amendments to the budget. And then I have a 30-day period in which I can accept amendments. My practice has been to waive the 30-day period on my part and accept all amendments. And I think the practice last year was to waive the 30-day amendment period as well so that we can conclude the process. Still, I believe councillor Visante has a motion.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and for members of council proposing that. First of all, I think I'd like to take this opportunity to thank staff for all of the hard work that they put into producing this budget together with the mayor and members of council. It's, it's been a long road and I want to thank everyone involved. You all know who you are. And so given that we have the budget here, we do have an opportunity, if council is willing, to waive the 30-day periods. So I'll ask the clerk to have the motion up on the screen that the proposed budget period, and that in accordance with the municipal act, council reduced the time period as set out in section 7.3 to pass a resolution making an amendment to the proposed budget from 30 days from the date the budget is submitted, which was January 10th, 2025, to 10 days, being January 20th, 2025, after which the budget shall be deemed adopted by the municipality pending the mayoral veto period of 10 days or a mayoral decision to shorten the 10-day period. And I think that this gives staff their marching orders for this year and we can begin to implement everything that has been proposed in this year's budget right away. Thank you, Mayor.
All those in favor? Sure. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to our bylaws, bylaw 2025 to amend user fee, bylaw 193, 2024 for stormwater charges. We received the report but not the bylaw. Moved by councillor Power, seconded by councillor Keenan, all those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to confirming bylaw, to confirm the proceedings of council at a special meeting. Moved by councillor Brar, seconded by councillor Tor, all those in favor, motion carries. That leaves the last word to me before adjournment. Just want to thank all the finance staff that put literally thousands of hours over the year into this budget. So we can have a special recognition and thank you to our chief budget officer, Mark Maderos, to our treasurer, Nash Deemer, thank you for your incredible support of the city, to Commissioner Alex Malovjak as well. I know the support of corporate services was instrumental and integral to this process. So and of course, the CEO gets brought into everything. Marlon, thank you for the guidance and leadership during this budget process. So we now have the motion for adjournment, moved by councillor Santos, seconded by councillor Power, all those in favor, motion carries.